I'd like to reconvene this special council meeting of yesterday and call it to order. First item is to ask for a motion to bring the deferred motion back to the table. Move back, Councilor Nixon, seconded by Councilor Brothers. All those in favor, motions carried. And before we get into the motion which has been moved and seconded, I'd like to ask Mr. Strachan to talk about the process that we're involved with today.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just very briefly for council information as well as the general public, the first two bylaws that are before council, the first one being OCP and NAMI, is just a re-designation of the property to future growth. It doesn't include any development rights directly to that property. Any property that is annexed into a municipality, the municipality then needs to assign an OCP designation to it. So we would ask the council to consider that bylaw for third reading. The second bylaw is related to creating a CD zoning. Again, it doesn't create any development rights for the particular parcel that's before you, so we would ask the council to consider third reading of that bylaw as well. The third bylaw is related to the actual rezoning of the subject property from its current CSRD zoning to the new CD zone. And that's where, I hope, the council can have a discussion, because this is where all the conditions are attached to. Some of the requirements you see in the original bylaw, there's five conditions related to it in regards to statutory right of way, a master development agreement, no build covenants, and so forth. So all of the meat of the conditions of council are in that clear bylaw. So I'm hoping we can move forward to that component of it and then have further discussion about what opportunities or what options are available for council and then we can consider how you wish to move forward, either with this bylaw or to go back and then look at a different option. Thank you, Your Worship.
So, first motion is the Official Community Plan bylaw 2109 read a third time. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor, motions carried. There's only amendment by law number 2110, be read a third time. Is anybody prepared to make that motion?
Yes.
Councilor Duke and Councilor Nixon, any discussion on that motion? This is to create the comprehensive development zone. Comments, all those in favor, motions carried. Before we get into the third motion, I'd like to again go back to Mr. Strachan for a short presentation.
Thank you, Your Worship. So as was initially discussed, this is the real need of what this application is about. This is the bylaw that would rezon the property to the CD zone. So this is where we originally attached these five conditions. So what we saw from the public input that was received, there was concern that possibly there's a need for more time, the resort may be in its infancy and needing more time to mature in order to accept additional competition within its area. So there is an opportunity, we reviewed what we have before us first, to see if there's an opportunity to possibly do that within the structure that's before you now. And if that does not work for council, then we'll go through what other options there are. The options being another zoning district or some other component. That would then bring us back to restarting the bylaws for this particular component. We'll go back and reconsider first and second reading schedule, whether public carry and move forward. But I'm hoping we can review this component first and see if there's an opportunity to address council's concerns, but then what we have before us, before we put this one aside and begin again. So one of the conditions that we have is the orders to register a no build, no disturb covenant in favor of the city of Grand St. over 75% of the area. So this is the area that the block is outside of the first phase. So it gives an indication that there's a first phase and then there's a second phase. But that's actually not the way the development is set up. It's more than two phases, it's actually three components. But this covenant had only divided it in two. So when I'm looking at it, I'm wondering if there would be an opportunity for more time within that framework. So instead of dividing it into the first phase and everything else, dividing it further and extending that timeline for five years to, say, 10 years, to allow for more opportunity for maturity, to break into the three components of development that the site naturally gives, which is the first plateau, the second plateau, and the third plateau. Instead of just 75% of the property being released in five years, we look at possibly a third being released now for the Treehouse Hotel component, a third as phase two in five years, and a third phase in 10 years. So extending that 219 covenant up to 10 years to allow the resort the opportunity to have that additional time to perceive of the developments they designed in their MDA. It also aligns well with the MDA because that begins to get into the realm of timeline where the road access that carries through this property begins to make sense for access to lands beyond. So that's where we're at, there's an opportunity to look at item 6E within the original resolution to look at amending that 219 covenant component of council's conditions to extend it up a third, a third, a third, a third at the beginning, a third in five years, and the final third up for 10 years. That clock would begin if council adopts the bylaw. So this would be after the MDA is prepared and you've had an opportunity to review it. You know then where the buildable areas are, where the development is going to take place, where the roads are going to be, what infrastructure is going to be there. We're going to have all the engineering completed for those components in the master. And you'll have that all before you, before you get adoption to the bylaw. So your third reading today is not adoption of the bylaw, this is by no means approved. All of those components, including these five items, have to be completed before council and will have to start forward with consideration of adoption. It'll likely take some time, it'll be at least a month or two before we go back to council.
Councilor Nixon.
So just for clarity, we're adjusting the bylaw and timeframes of the phases today, is this possible?
Well, that's a recommendation that's talked about.
Just for clarity, Your Worship, it's not to change the bylaw, it's just to change the conditions that have been established at second reading. The conditions are conditions to be completed prior to adoption. So it's for the adoption, it's not changing once it's now written out. And that can be done following input that's been received in public carry. This is, as the mayor mentioned, just a suggestion the staff have made. We did contact the applicant to see if this would be something that they would entertain. They have indeed said that they would entertain this as an option.
Councilor Nixon.
Kudos to staff and the proponent for working together to look for a solution. You know, there isn't a win-win making decisions that we make. And I'm just very, very impressed that I come into City Hall this morning and I see that late last night, work was already being done by our development plan and the proponent to say, hopefully.
Okay, there is no motion on the floor. If people want to make comments before they put a motion, I don't have a problem with that. I'm looking for a direction from council. Me personally, I think there is a win-win and I'm not convinced that this is the answer for a win-win. So the floor is open, I don't make the motions. Councilor Nixon.
Your Worship, pardon me for not making the motion first. My motion is to follow the recommendation from staff to look at a three-phase development with the conditions of the no build covenant for five years on the second phase and a no build covenant on the third phase for 10 years and everything else as scheduled.
Motion's on the floor, is there a secondary for the motion? Councilor Brothers, discussion on the motion. Councilor Salz.
Your Worship, just for clarity, can I ask staff how this affects the previous agreement in the master development plan with RMR? I'm trying to remember what year, and you may know, Your Worship, what year was that master development plan signed in, 2015, 2008, 2005, 2006? I'm not sure. 2003?
2005.
2005, okay.
I have a few comments and a few questions, if nobody else is jumping in. Going back to last night and some of the questions that were brought to the floor, the first one that I have was, Councilor Brothers talked about retail and I thought about it last night and I thought about it again this morning. And, you know, one side says there's retail, the other side says there is no retail. But there is retail that would be associated with a hotel, like that would be commonly found in a hotel. Is that an easier way to set?
Your Worship, the definition for hotel includes a component of retail that would need to be within that use. The components that we, when I spoke to the applicant, the components of a village would require a level of a high street or a main street of the plaza from that's freestanding retail, which would not be permitted as part of this. So when it doesn't have a primary use of retail, it's secondary and included in the definition for hotel.
So, and I think about, you know, I've been to a few ski resorts and looking at the Sun Peaks model, I walk down, and I don't want to use the word village because it's a test of the word, but I walk down the commonade and the hotel, and on the main floor of the hotel, there's like a ski shop and an ice cream parlor and a pizza joint. Now, would those be, is that what would be called retail found inside a hotel? If there was a ski shop and a clothing store and then second, third, and fourth floor there was hotel rooms, is that? I'm just trying to get a definition of what it is. When somebody says something you can find in a hotel, retail, I'm thinking toothpaste and chocolate bars and mix and things like that, but where's the line?
The zoning bylaw doesn't have a line particularly. It requires it to be a part of the hotel use. It doesn't have size limits or other components of it. As noted, it's a bylaw from 1902. So I didn't envision this type of development, that's for sure. That's one of the reasons we're updating the zoning bylaw. And as you update the zoning bylaw, it changes the definitions that would apply to future development as well.
So when I talk about Sun Peaks model, does that bring any familiarity with you? You know what I'm talking about? When you walk in on the covered walkway of the hotel, there's a ski shop and maybe a travel agency and a furniture store or clothing store, is that, would that be acceptable? Would that be approved here?
That would be what we're talking about in regards to a high street or a main street component. And that would have to appear within the MDA and we wouldn't support that kind of component. The intent is not to do that with this particular element.
All right. So the next question that I have is, there was discussion last night about density and I went in a week ago and talked to you about what, if this whole thing went through the way that it's being proposed, the number that's been kicked around, and I didn't do the math, and I think it's very difficult to do the math, but, you know, the number of 800 rooms is a possibility, that's been kicked around as a possibility. Last night, when we were asked a question about how many rooms, I seem to recall that you had talked about three buildings of 200 rooms. Now, is that 200 rooms each or 200 rooms total?
The concept was trying to provide some sort of context, so what can be built into a box so that people can understand what that box will look like? And that would be 200 in each box, so each of the three, so a total of 600. In that particular format, I was looking at another likeness of a hotel, which was an example, it was the Best Western. It was built similarly to the Best Western, it would be that many rooms. The proposal is not to build a Best Western style hotel, it's not build a series of pods and those pods are going to be larger in size than your standard hotel room and they're going to eat up that square footage at a faster rate. So you're going to have less units if you do more of those types of pods, or if you do larger units, you're going to do less units as well. If you do smaller units, you're going to do more. That's one of the reasons that we don't, in the city bylaws, go the direction of controlling development in commercial areas by the number of units, because there's such a variety. Particularly when you're looking at a longer scale and we're talking about five and possibly 10 years out, to constrain it to a specific market type based on unit count is really trying to project out what the marketplace is going to be saying 10 years from now. None of us are in a position where we can say with that marketplace what that demand is going to be at that time. So what we control is the box. We control the footprint and the amount of space that can be commercially occupied within the site. So we have control of the box. How it's broken apart, we leave to the marketplace to essentially establish, except for things that are necessary for it. So we're going to be establishing how many square foot of space for combinations that need to be placed to the MDA because you're going to have enough sewer and water and all these components. So those components are going to begin to refine when we get towards the final step in this process of the MDA. You're going to get a much more refined package as far as what's going to be built on the site, simply because you have to have the infrastructure in place in order to accommodate it. And putting that many more people into a building, you need to accommodate for their functions. You're going to make sure those lines are big enough. So you're going to have to have that established as part of the MDA before council makes adoption of the bylaw. We don't have that piece yet. That's why we've asked for it to be a part of the bylaw before adoption, so you have that additional information that's going to be produced by the applicant's engineers.
Right. But when people are trying to get comfortable with the density and somebody says that there could be 800 rooms, well, I guess we can't say, no, there won't be, because we don't really know, depending on how it's configured, whether there's bonus density involved, things like that, but there could be.
Your Worship, there could be 1,200 rooms, they're very, very small. That's where we're getting to, it's not controlling it in a commercial setting by the number of rooms because the variability is significantly high.
So, I hope you guys don't mind, I have a whole bunch of stuff. If anybody wants to jump in, put their hand up. The next question that I have is, one of the concessions is an access road to the RMR property. And I guess, you know, it just seems to me that this is being called a concession, but isn't this part of land use and good planning and having access to next property? Isn't that something that would happen as a matter of course?
Your Worship, if this road had been a part of our official community plan or a part of our city bylaws, certainly, as the appropriate officer, you have the responsibility to ensure there's access to lands beyond. However, this particular road is not a part of our OCP, nor is that component of the plan that was prepared. The only components of the plan that was prepared that were brought into bylaw by the city were the components that are in the master agreement between the province and RMR that are within the resort lands. So the designations, the zoning, and all of the components that were in the agreement that was signed within the province and RMR and that brought into bylaw by the city are isolated to the resort lands only, not to the adjacent province. Although the plan was brought forward and endorsed by a council at the time, it's not within our bylaws. It's not a statutory requirement that the dedication of the road become part of this because it's not part of our OCP at this moment in time.
You're talking about the other lands or are you talking about the lands? But isn't that what our motion just did?
Well, we recommended, we recommended that the condition of the rezoning be that the statutory right of way for public access to the lands be provided.
Okay. And that's my point, is that this would be a matter, of course, that we would be doing with just about every property that we're looking at?
No, because it's not within our bylaws, we wouldn't require it. The applicant did offer it because it does appear in the plan as an opportunity for access, but they're not required to provide it. We certainly encourage that cross-connection of access with any commercial building. Cross-connection between businesses has always been the deal for both sides.
I'm going to give everybody a break from listening to me and I'll, Aaron has his hand up, and then Gary, and then Connie, and then I'll go on to my next page after that. Aaron.
Your Worship, through the chair, I'd like to ask a question of staff. Hopefully, this might provide some clarity. There's a master development agreement between the resort and the province, that's one master development agreement, but as part of this proposed development, there we will have a separate master development agreement. I'd like to ask staff, what are this current council's and future council's authority within that agreement to guide this development into something that's appropriate? And if you could just extrapolate a little bit on what is contained in that agreement?
So at the point that the agreement is entered into, council has the ability to review and make sure that it's meeting with their objectives where with the land use. So you're going to be able to look at what densities are proposed, where the sightings are proposed, where the infrastructure is going to be located, where the roads are going to be located. And then that establishes that for the future. So the intent of the master development agreement is to ensure that there's a certain level of continuity in development beyond just the council hand. So this council, for example, has another two years in the form of its beginning of their tenure. There's going to be a subsequent council to ensure that things carried past in design from council to council, so that you don't get this break. The other part of it is it allows for infrastructure to be installed in the first phase that's going to be adequate and is designed to be adequate for the final phase. And it also ensures that the phases in between, the development or stops at some point for some reason, that the pieces that have been built can stand on their own. And that's mostly what staff are looking at, is to ensure that this is adequate to meet the servicing needs of all of those components that are proposed to be developed, but also ensuring that if only the first phase gets built, that it can stand on its own and no component is missing that's critical for that being standing on its edge. So that's what we look at with the master development there, so that's the purpose of it. To amend it in the future would be an agreement between the parties. Now, that doesn't take away from council's ability to land use. There's changes that are going to happen with the zoning bylaw, there's changes that are going to happen with council over time, there's changes that are going to happen with the community as far as how people feel for different uses within the community. And all of those would apply to the zoning, which is the true component, I think you're getting at, which is the actual land and development format that takes place. That will be controlled by the zoning bylaw. A certain level of it is, you know, there's a development right according to the master development agreement, but the shape of that and the character of it, and the character of those specific uses will lay the change of time. Certainly, when we talk about the definition for hotel, I don't imagine that definition is ever going to be the same once we move our way through the zoning bylaw. Because there is a hotel built there now, the new definition would apply to an application of the current zones. The MDA doesn't give that land use right per se in the cartilage.
Councilor Salz.
Your Worship, I have a question, Mr. Strachan as well. I heard last night, the proponent had made statements about having direct access from RMR to a lift or a roadway or whatever. And then, I believe I heard from Mr. Reddy at some point say that there was no direct access to RMR from the proponent's property, which makes me ask the question, what would happen with pedestrians who want to ski, leaving one development and then have to walk up the hill? Do we have to widen the road? How would that sort of thing be if there was no working relationship between the two and these people wanted to get access to the land?
Your Worship, so the movement of people is not just vehicles, it's obviously pedestrians, cyclists, it's full transportation. Because there is no interconnection, because this property is not a part of the resort lands in the MDA, we have to automatically go back to the lowest common denominator, which is they have to provide that pedestrian access independent of the lands that are adjacent to them. There is no agreement in place unless there was some agreement that came through to change that as part of the engineering design process, part of the charge for the engineers in the MDA would be how pedestrians can be dealt with, the same way as we require them to house the access network to this property as far as how road connections are going to be and to ensure that it's safe. The same issue will be dealt with with pedestrians and pedestrian access. Is there a need for improvement in commutability to ensure that those pedestrians can safely access the lands beyond and services beyond?
I'd just like to follow up on my question, because I heard a couple of different comments about this last night and I was under the impression that lifts are not allowed use in zoning by law. And because I know that Mr. Evans talked about a lift and then Mr. Blythe came up and said that there wouldn't be a lift, so I, unless I heard something wrong, but that's my understanding of what I heard last night.
Your Worship, even the figures provided by the applicant, they identified one of the potential lift locations, it wasn't all within the land itself, it was in the adjacent resort lands. And they had offered within their package to resort to construct that component on their lands, not on this land. So if you slip in the package on the maps, they show where that lift location will be. And it's not on the subject property, it's actually on the resort lands. Was there indication?
All right, okay. Just to end.
There's no proposal in the package that's before council to construct a lift on the site.
Councilor Brothers.
I think you've answered this question through the chair, Mr. Strachan, but in terms of infrastructure, you're talking about standalone and also the three phases. The proponent just builds the 25% that we're talking about now, the first that's on the table now in terms of that. Is there a difference in infrastructure? I mean, is the infrastructure different in anticipation of the rest of it?
Your Worship, so what is before council is actually a little different, it wasn't 25%, it was a third, a third, a third. So, yeah, just to be clear. And yes, if it's only going to be building the first piece, the other two pieces still become part of that design work. So you're not going to design for phases that are not equipped to continue.
But in terms of infrastructure, sewer and everything else, do they, I mean, does it make a difference to Mr. Evans? Let's say we do the first phase and then he's, you know, does he have to plan in terms of infrastructure, size of sewers and that type of thing for the further phases?
Absolutely. And that is the purpose of the MDA, is to ensure that that's designed. And what that does is essentially ensures that the developer puts the investment in the infrastructure in the first phase. They don't need for the first phase, but it's adequate for the subsequent phases. And that, for our perspective, we're working out, looking at and saying, okay, is this fit enough or is it adequate or is it oversized or is it not going to have capacity? Is that intersection between commutability and access, are we going to fail as a result of phase three? So is there improvements that has to happen as a result of the growth, expansion of that access or change in that access that's going to take place? And that's where we look to the professional engineers, the other professionals of all, to give us that documentation and then send it to our professionals. We have an excellent engineering house as well, who will review it and ensure that it's meeting professional standards.
So no matter what, you would have to expend that money upfront for the rest of the?
For the MDA. There's specific phase engineering that's done for each phase. So the proposal is to have a no build covenant put across the entire property as part of the MDA. We only get the no build covenant lifted once we have that phase's engineering drawings approved. And that's where you're actually looking at how buildings are being connected, the parking lots are going to be, the drainage is going to work. That detail, the no build covenant remains on the remainder of the property until that phase's detailed engineering has been completed. Not just, the master development agreement makes sure that the major components that will be taking place in the first phase are adequate for the second phase and the third phase, and identifying the real benchmarks where things have to happen for the subsequent phase to work.
Thank you.
Councilor Drew.
I just wanted to have some more clarity, of course, for these decisions, but I think what's been brought forward, and I think the staff are working last night, working on this this morning, and so we're, we've all been working on right now, we're still looking at the fundamentals of what we were looking at yesterday. This hasn't changed all that much from what I can tell, except for timelines. You're looking at a Treehouse Hotel and you're looking at a phase master development that's on the side of the department. So what I don't want to do, and what I've seen happen before, is that we send, if we're going back, we send an applicant back and say, hey, we want you to go and do some work and come back with a third, a third, a third phasing. And then we rattle it around again, they've done a whole bunch of work. And really, we're battling the same fundamental issue at the end of the day, that's the struggle that council's having. So I just want to make sure that around this table, we are having the right discussion. That's all. That's all.
Well, just to be clear, the discussion is in third reading, and would be the full development that we've always, that's always been on the table, but basically get over 10 years instead of five years. And I have a few more comments that I want to make, and I don't, for me, I appreciate that, sorry to find my comment wrong, but I'm, it's not acceptable to me, and I don't plan on going in favor of the motion. I think it goes well beyond what was originally talked about, and that's my first comment. The original request was for a treehouse hotel only. I see last night, and with all the written comments coming in, that there is a lot of support for the treehouse hotel. I support the treehouse hotel. I think that the treehouse, well, I know the treehouse hotel is now acceptable to the resort. Are they 100% happy? Of course, we're probably not, but the treehouse hotel concept is acceptable to them, and they would live with that. I listened to comments about Lonnie Parker, about the annexation, and I have to agree with a lot of the comments that she made. I did speak with Mr. Evans, and I said that if I knew that the implications that we're talking about today, back then, I would not have been as supportive of the annexation. I heard a lot of comments last night talking about the original deal and how we got to where we are today, the original master plan, the master development agreement. I think that there was some very good comments from people like Psyche Brown, Harry Measure, Matt Singh, who sat at this table, and Bruce Allen, who cautioned us about moving too quickly and do we really know what the implications of the decisions that we're talking about? What is our responsibility legally and morally? And I know that, I know what I feel my responsibilities are, and I guess that's why I keep going back to this thing here. I'm struggling with myself on how I support, knowing that, the role that I played in getting the resort sold and developed in the first place. I feel that I have a legal and a moral responsibility to ensure that the resort is going to be successful for the long term. And it's unfortunate that this whole rezoning has evolved down to more of a popularity contest than to what it actually should be. And I gotta say, I was a little bit disappointed in some of the comments that came to the table last night, personal comments about people when that's not what we're there to talk about, that's not what we're talking about today. We're talking about rezoning, we're talking about land use, we're talking about economic viability, the economic future, and the decision that we're going to be making today is going to have a huge impact on this community. And it's a question of, is it going to be a positive impact, or is it going to be a negative impact? And to some extent, I look at it, it's a little, it can be a little bit of a gamble. And I look at my role when it comes to gambling with taxpayers' future, taxpayers' dollars, and the economic well-being of the community, I have to say that I would rather be erring on the side of caution and being a little bit more conservative and not taking a risk with other people's future. I think that there is a win-win solution here, and I think that's what Counselor Duke was trying to put on the table last night, is that 25% of this property should be zoned for a treehouse hotel. The original concept was for a 60 that I remember, and of course, I don't have anything in writing, but sometimes I'm pretty good with numbers, but I always remember it being a 60 unit. Let's call it an 80 unit. The remainder of the property, reflecting of what Counselor Duke said last night about R1, I'm not sure that R1 is the best designation for the rest of the property, knowing that we want to be, look at higher densities where possible, making the community more livable and more affordable, but looking at a combination of R1, R2, and R3, I think is, and I'm not a planner, so I don't know exactly, but the concept is, in my mind, that's acceptable, is approve the treehouse hotel. I think there's a lot of support for it, but from the commercial perspective, that's all that a commercial property should be. I think that there was a lot of very good information, there was a lot of passionate people last night, there was a lot of good information, and I'm not sure what the rest of council or the rest of the community got out of it, but that's where I am, and I can't support this motion. I think it goes too far, and I would rather, going back to what Counselor Duke was trying to put on the table. Counselor Nixon.
Your worship, nobody's more proud of the work that you've done, Freddie Bruski's done, and all the others that you've sat around this council table in the nineties than I am. But today is today, and I went to the CSRD on my behalf as the alternate for the city of Revelstoke, when Director Parker tried to put this land in a dance after it was already passed by the Congress in December of 2015. And I went in February and spoke to the CSRD, who have agreed to work with the city of Revelstoke, to look at all those lands on our boundaries, like we're making progress there, and having a good look at land use for all of Revelstoke, and what's best for the future of Revelstoke. So we need to look at the future. And you guys were passionate and did really good work, and all those people that got up and spoke last night, they all were passionate, and they all did good work. And Psyche Brown, I didn't even meet her before, I hadn't even met most of the Galardi team before. I'd only met their lawyer when I was on council last term a couple of times, so I've never met them in five years. But Psyche Brown worked for the resort branch, and when did she retire?
About last year.
So why wasn't she able to rassle that update to the master development plan to come forward to this community, to tell us what RMR is going to do? Like, we could vote this down to date and RMR do nothing. We could vote for this today and RMR do nothing. So we have somebody with capital that knocked on our new door over there, got received by good staff that worked with him for two years, this was not rushed. And today, we're saying, you know, we are not sure if you're going to upset the elephant next door. And the elephant is not talking to us about what they're going to do. It might be talking to you a little bit, and that's good. You've done good work at trying to keep good relations with them. But we have to do what's best for Revelstoke.
Counselor Rivers.
I'd like to speak on this matter as well. As many people said yesterday, this is not about Mr. Evans, this is not about RMR, this is about we as a council are making a decision about what is best for this community. And it's a difficult issue to deal with, a really difficult issue, but I'm really grateful that we have these types of problems to deal with, because a lot of communities don't have these advantages that we have. I appreciate that we have RMR and all of what RMR brings to this community. And I also appreciate the fact that the Galardys stepped in in October of 2008 to really salvage this resort. I also appreciate David Evans has shown a commitment to this community, and he also has shown faith in this community and the economic possibilities of this community by bringing the application that he's got on the table. I read all the documents, as all of, I'm sure you have. I also read the all-season resort and mountain guidelines that somebody, I think it was one of the persons that talked about yesterday, that goes on guidelines for resorts. And what I take from that, it's clearly, these guidelines talk about, the reason the province has these resorts is to have economic development in the community and to find jobs, and that's really the goal. And I also take from these guidelines, it's not, there's a need for communities and the resort to work together in order to complete these goals. Issues like this test our need and our ability to work together. This is really very difficult. And I'm hoping right from the start, no matter what happens, that we can find some way to continue to work together that's best for this whole community, best for RMR, best for Mr. Evans, and everything else. Last night, there was a lot of discussion about promises, especially about the resort master plan and the need for the city to uphold its promises. And I've read them at the resort master plan, and I'm sure some of you have also read the resort. There's lots of promises in there, but promises go both ways. And when I look at the promises of RMR over a 20-year period, they've said, you know, they're going to build 110 trails, 25 lifts, three on mountain lodges. We're 10 years into it, at least 10 years into it, and we haven't seen as much development as we would have thought. I mean, we're not even close to what has been proposed over the 20 years. Now, there's reasons for this, and I'm not throwing tomatoes at anybody to say, you know, if somebody's fault or whatever. We've had economic problems with the resort itself. There was an economic downturn in the market, and, you know, RMR probably has their own reasons for doing what they're doing, their business reasons, and I accept that. But you see, the way I look at it is they rejigged their promises. I mean, they're not following through at the same pace for whatever reasons, and they might be good reasons, but, and the build is being longer, but the city has been impacted by the fact that RMR has not progressed at the same rate. We've seen over the last many years, a terrible downfall in real estate prices, and it affected a lot of people in this community. There was a huge spike in real estate when the resort came here, and then, you know, because of the downturn, you know, real estate prices fell dramatically, a lot of people got into trouble with mortgages and everything else, tremendous loss of jobs, a lot of people who had come to this community with the hopes and dreams of the resort, they had to leave. So this community has been affected by whatever has gone on, as RMR has been affected by what has gone on. And we need to, we've had to rejig, and we have to rejig as to what's best for this community. We have to look at investments in this community and development in this community that will benefit us. Now, RMR claims that they're going to be adversely affected, and I don't want adversely effect, and I don't want this council to adversely affect RMR. We all want this to work, we're not trying to make it difficult for anybody else, but I mean, when I look at all of the facts, RMR right now can build 4,000 venues without doing any more infrastructure. They have that ability right now, and they've chosen not to do that for whatever reason. We haven't seen any real estate sales on the mountain for a long period of time again. I don't know what the reasons are. There's no real estate news sold up there, other than an exchange of the units that have already been built. I don't even think they have a real estate office up there, and that's RMR's decision. That's fine. But in looking at whether or not Mr. Evans' project will impact on the resort, I mean, I have to understand, you know, how is it going to impact on the resort? And the resort is sort of, RMR's sort of tied my hands, and I think tied council's hands in understanding that. As Counselor Nixon said, we don't know what they plan to develop. If we had something on the table that said, we were building a hotel here, and we're doing this, we're doing that, and Mr. Evans' project will impact upon that, I think I could have a better understanding of how I go with this decision. But what is before me, I don't have any of that. And so there is nothing that I can do. I mean, I will support the motion that is before council right now, because I think that is a tremendous, it's a concession of a part of Mr. Evans. He's made the five-year concession first, and now it's made a five and 10, but that gives, that gives the resort an opportunity to rejig and figure out what they're going to do. It gives Mr. Evans the opportunity to move forward, and it gives us something. As Counselor Nixon said, if we turn down this, we may end up with nothing as a community, because RMR, their plans may be, well, we're not doing anything for the next five or 10 years. So at least everybody gets something, and it's a win-win-win as far as I'm concerned. So I'm going to support this.
Counselor Duke.
Thank you, Connie. Cover a lot of bases there. At the end of the day, and I've been saying from the beginning, this is a land use issue, right? I don't, it doesn't matter to me, the Galardys, it doesn't matter to me, David Evans, to be honest, and whoever's knocking on our door, whoever's, what they've done in the past, is what we're looking at right now, is do we want to have extra development beside the resort development that we've already, it's already approved by previous councils? And through the public hearing last night, it was very clear, everyone's in support of the treehouse hotel, and there's grave concerns about building infrastructure beyond that that is on the side of the resort. So that's where I sit, I think the same spot I sat last night, that I'm in support of the treehouse hotel, and I think the hills, and it's too much infancy to know that this is a good idea right now. It really is. And yeah, maybe they haven't done a lot of building in the past, but we're not talking a lot of years. Most of their start in the 60s, right? So they've done as much of development that I think they could do in the current market environment that we've had.
Counselor Solsky.
Just further to what Mr. Duke has said and Counselor Rivers, when we talked about, or we heard Psyche Brown last night say, when they put in an all-season resort plan, they want to leave their buffer zone or something for a time period, I believe it was 15 years, to help that resort mature. And the reason I asked earlier about when was this signed, so 2005 puts us to 2020 for, in Psyche Brown's words, a mature resort. So we're looking at that, is, we're now 2016. If the treehouse was built, and it took a year or two years or whatever, but from this point, we are at five years before anything else was developed. We're now into 2021, which is one year past, and another five years, we're into 2026 before any of that development goes forward. Have we not allowed enough time for the resort to mature and still allow them to do what they need to do within their current business plan to go forward? Have we infringed on them? And I don't know what the legal ramifications are with the agreement that's been signed. I'm assuming, because we're at this place, that there are no other legal ramifications. But my question is, and I'm going to put that to all of you, are we already agreeing by going forward with this ask-proposed, allowing RMR, not allowing, but their concerns are always being raised because of that topic?
I think the impression I'm getting from you people is that going to win-win solution is somehow shutting down the treehouse development, and it's not. We are giving, and I support, giving Mr. Evans exactly what he originally asked for, and I just think that you're taking a whole bunch of risk that I'm not prepared to take for this town by going farther than that. So I'm, I just think about some of the people and the qualifications that they have, they came to give us advice last night, and all of a sudden, we're throwing it out the window. And I think you're making a great mistake if you're going to prove it, so. Anyways, I'm done talking about it. Does there anybody else who'd like to make any comments before we call the, oh, sorry, Counselor Leonard, you did have to end up?
Yeah, your worship, I'd like to thank everyone who came out last night in the meeting room, but also the other people who wrote in 220 pages of comments, and I did listen to them. You see a pretty clear majority of those people. Everyone has different levels of understanding of the proposal, you know, but they're looking, I think, for this to go forward in the community. And what I see is a compromise, and what I see, that we're agreeing on, the mayor, Counselor Duke, and everyone else, is that we have a treehouse hotel that the community supports and wants to go forward. We all have different reservations and concerns and approaches to what happens after those in the next two phases, but in terms of the first phase, that's something that I think a lot of people would like. The majority, almost everyone, including some of the representatives from RMR last night, were saying, progressionally, that's not an issue for us, it's the other things that are the issue. It's my understanding, and we have the proposal that staff has floated today, which is to extend the five, out to a five- and a 10-year phase development, is I guess the solution that they've come up with or proposed based on preliminary discussions last night following the public hearing that was happening at the council table. It's my belief that within the master development agreement, which according to the proposal before us would be worked out in the next couple of months and come back to, come back to us for, you know, review, that some of the further discussion that's happening today at this table, including the mayor's opinion, including Counselor Duke's opinions, and every, you know, Counselor Brothers' great speech today, could be incorporated in that. Can I always say a question? Could be incorporated in that, you know. We share the concern, we don't want to provide unfair competition to the resort. I think there's a lot of creativity that could be worked into the master development agreement to come up with something that's more acceptable to everyone. But I think what I've heard clearly that's acceptable to the community is we have a unique proposal that we would like to see go forward in Phase One. I'm going to support this, but I mean, my direction to staff, and my, like, verbal cues to staff today is that, you know, there is a concern that we don't want to throw the baby over the waterfall or whatever it is by coming up with a plan that is going to out-compete or take up too much hotel rooms. And I also would encourage the parties involved to work together in whatever way possible. Hopefully, we can get from an acrimonious position to something that was a bit more of a partnership. I really do see an opportunity for this applicant to, hopefully, if people can bury the hatchet and come up to some agreements with, you know, on building lifts, as has been suggested, that it could be an opportunity for some more partnership and some more investment in this project. And I, you know, I'm not an expert on what staff is going to come up with in this master development agreement, but I'd like to see those kinds of, as much as possible, and I don't know legally how possible they are, that those kinds of, sorry, outside-of-the-box creative solutions that focus on a win for the community are included in that type of an agreement. And another thing I'd like to say is, when I first arrived in the community, I saw the big diorama of the, what do you call it, the resort, the 40 lifts, and helicopters flying around, and all hotels and stuff like that. You know, 800 hotel rooms was one of the things that was thrown around last night. I don't think we forgot the bottom, exactly how many hotel rooms, depending on how you define it, is in here. But, you know, even if we approve the whole shebang today, and there was no five-year clause to start with, like the resort, these are things that are dependent on economics and dependent on time for them to develop. So I don't, I think that, you know, it's something that's going to have to grow in synergy with everyone else. But for now, I think I would favor the proposal that relies on a master development agreement that supports the first phase of the development and is very cognizant of what the effect of future phases of the development would be on the overall health of the resort.
But that's not what the motion is. I just wanted to be clear that...
Well, when you read it, come back to us, when you call.
Counselor English.
I've been listening intently for a really, really long time. I don't think that I can add much to the discussion after Connie and Eric have been speaking. I'm inclined to agree with Counselor Sols that with the extension of the time build-out, that this is the right decision, and I am going to support this motion.
More discussion, motion is to approve in third reading. All those in favor? Against? Motion's carried. Before we...
For third reading, have amended.
Counselor, move on to second reading.
Okay, I'm confused, because I thought the motion was to amend the terms of the no-build, no-destroy covenant to be comprising of three phases as opposed to two.
Yeah.
Second one for five years, the third one for, I'll release them, can you?
Correct.
Now we need to consider third reading of the zoning amendment by law situation.
Okay, so we're on D now.
Yes.
Your worship, I'll just bring forward that zoning amendment, final number 2118, be read a third time.
No, it's amended, just goes...
No, the final's not being amended.
No.
Secondary. Counselor Brothers, any discussion? All those in favor? Against? Motion's carried. Motion to adjourn. Counselor Sols, all in favor?